I will now call to order the April 11, 2024, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. For staff support today, County Council Steven Madcor, Clerk to the Board Tony Marneck. Roll call Commissioner Schult.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
President.
Chair Smith.
Here, I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, elected officials, and staff, we will be using Robert's Rules of Order in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite comments. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First is a public hearing. The first public hearing is receiving public comments on the Community Development 2024 Action Plan. The grant value is approximately $3,192,180 for one year. Funding is through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Rod Cook, Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services, and Mark Saroy, Community Development Coordinator, will present. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here for our public hearing, and I'm going to turn this over to Mark Saroy. He's going to give us a little bit of background information for any public who's listening.
Good morning Administrator Schmidt and Commissioners. As a participating jurisdiction receiving three federal formula grants, Clackamas County Community Development Program is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to prepare and submit an annual plan that outlines its policies, projects, and services for meeting local needs for affordable housing, homeless services, new public facilities, existing public facility improvements, and neighborhood improvements throughout Clackamas County. Today's hearing gives the Board and the public the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback about our fiscal year 2024-2025 annual plan. This year's plan is the third year of our five-year consolidated plan. The purpose of the annual plan is to provide accountability and transparency of the community development program to the community, to the Board, and to HUD. The plan highlights achievements and identifies any program changes in the coming year. The plan also includes three grant applications for the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. To date, the actual amounts of those grants have not been provided by HUD. The contingency plan for decreased or increased funding when the actual allocation amounts are distributed by HUD is to first reduce or increase the administration amounts for the CDBG and the home programs, and then to reduce or increase the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Project budget and reduce or increase the home multifamily project budget. The ESG Admin and Homeless Management Information Project will also be reduced or increased depending on the actual allocation amount. The public engagement process for this plan began when we requested CDBG project proposals in December of 2021, and more recently with an online public meeting on February 21. The meeting was for the county staff to hear about any community needs or concerns, answer any questions about the need for grant funding, clarify what types of projects and services are eligible for funding, and inform people on how to apply for grant funds. The public meeting was advertised in the Lake Oswego Review, the county's newspaper of record, on February 8. The meeting notice was also distributed by email to a list of interested persons on our citizen participation list. Today's hearing was also published in the county's newspaper of record, the Lake Oswego Review, on March 14. The hearing notice was also emailed to a list of interested persons on our citizen participation list. The public notice included instructions for submitting comments on the plan and provided a link to the draft plan on our webpage where the draft plan is posted. A 30-day comment period started on March 14, and that 30-day comment period ends on Monday, April 15. To date, we've received funding appreciation letters from the City of Malala, the City of Estacada, and the Estacada Community Center. These letters will be included in the public comment process, and I could read off those letters at the end of my testimony if you'd like, or at least a part of it. One of the community development program changes I'd like to highlight is that we have changed our procurement method somewhat to reduce the county contract liabilities. This past year, the Board approved subrecipient agreements for the City of Estacada, the City of Milwaukee, the City of Malala, and the City of Oregon City to complete several ADA sidewalk improvement projects. Not all community project partners have the capacity to be subrecipients. We will continue to evaluate each CDBG-funded project to determine if the partner agency has the capacity to bid projects and administer the project contracts on its own. This change has shifted some responsibility and risk to the partner agencies and reduced the number of CDBG project contracts coming before the Board. CDBG program staff will continue to work with community members to identify CDBG-eligible projects and services that meet a national objective. We'll work with community partners to clarify projects and budgets through funding agreements and subrecipient agreements, and we will conduct HUD-rerequired environmental reviews. We will also monitor each project for prevailing wage compliance, and then we'll report all the accomplishments of those projects to HUD in a HUD database. Much of the plan is in a required format and has required forms, but the highlights of the plan include an explanation of the new Housing and Community Development Division's organizational structure to better align services and projects and funding. This is also an ongoing division restructuring effort that includes county staff, HUD, and community partner agencies. The plan also details the project activities and services that are planned for funding in the coming year. Also included in the plan are activities that the county Housing Authority -- I'm sorry. Activities by the county and the Housing Authority to develop more affordable housing, services by Social Services Division to bring people out of poverty, and the Continuum of Care Homeless Services coordination with the Metro Supportive Housing Services to bring people into supportive housing with services. The next steps after this hearing, the Board has time after this meeting to review the annual plan and provide any comments that would be included in the record. The public review period ends Monday, April 15. The final action plan with all Board and public comments and three separate grant agreements will be submitted to the Board for approval after the HUD grant amounts are announced. Usually that's been around May 2 or early May, but HUD hasn't announced the grant amounts yet. So, once they announce those grant amounts, and they'll probably have a timeline for when we need to submit, so then I'll come back in front of you with the final plan and those grant applications. This concludes my presentation, and I'll just, if I could, just read briefly those letters from the Estacada Community Center. And this one's from Valerie Retaria. She's the center director. She says, "On behalf of Community Center Board, Staff, and Members, we would like to express our gratitude for your help funding our heat pumps, and we also put a roof on the Estacada Senior Center." And what she says is, "The American Red Cross blood drive is especially happy because it was challenging during hot days to keep the center cooled during our blood drive. So, we appreciate your support of rural communities and our partnership helping us to better serve seniors." And this letter is also from Estacada, but it's from the city manager of Estacada, Melanie Wagner. She says that having staff support for a community development program is a critical piece that allows Estacada to utilize CDBG funding due to the complex federal requirements. "We truly appreciate the value this program brings to our community through all the projects we have been able to do over the years. Thank you for your support, Melanie Wagner." This last letter is from McCann Corthell. He's the Assistant City Manager from Malala. And he says, "The Civic Center ADA Project provided three new ADA sidewalk access ramps, an ADA-compliant bus shelter, and an ADA-compliant restroom, and approximately 250 linear feet of ADA-compliant sidewalk. These CDBG-funded improvements will help provide immediate lasting impacts over -- for every elderly or disabled person who attends to any business or attends any public meetings at our Civic Center in Malala. The significant impacts of this project on elderly and disabled population in and around Malala is substantial and could not have been completed without the partnership of Clackamas County's CDBG program." So, those are the three letters we received, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Very nice. We look forward to the next round. Commissioner Schult.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. Mark Saroy. This $3.2 million for one year, does that mean the expenditures have to be spent in a given amount of time?
Commissioner Schult, that is not the case. So, we're talking about three different grants.
Okay, yeah.
The CDBG grant, which is roughly $2 million, that -- they allow us about seven years to spend that money, but we like to try to get it done in two years. The home grant, which is roughly $1 million, they allow us eight years to spend that money. And then with the ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant, the plan for those funds is we really support the homeless services, and we have a two-year time limit to spend that money. But we always try to plan to spend it in a year as soon as possible.
I see. Well, thank you.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I just want to say that one of my pleasant surprises being a Commissioner was first discovering this CDB program. It's awesome. It's able to spend money out in the -- all of Clackamas County. There's no limits on where those monies go, and it's for low-income projects for people. So, it's always great to sometimes see the signage or see the projects happening around in the area. And again, one of my pleasant surprises with this program, being a Commissioner. So, carry on.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, thanks for all you do. This is one of the reasons why I'm just going to put in a plug for the National Association of Counties with this because the committee I serve on and am currently chairing, we are the committee that really looks at these dollars and lobbies our federal delegation as well as other members of Congress to make sure that these funds remain intact and that they grow. And so, it's one of the reasons when we go back there to Washington, D.C., is to really, truly make sure that this revenue stream is available to you because there's some of the most, as Commissioner Savis says, some of the more flexible funds that we have to really increase housing and move people into prosperity. So, thank you.
Thank you. I like the fact that this funding source can be used for organizations that can provide whatever service they see in their community because we're not all-knowing and nor do we have eyes on every single service available. And that's really nice. Commissioners, seeing no further comments, I will now open the public hearing for public testimony on this issue. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify on this particular hearing? Tony, we see no one. We will look and see if there's anyone on Zoom.
If you would like to testify on the 2024 Community Development Action Plan, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there is any further discussion. Seeing none, staff will consider the comments received and return a final plan for the Board's approval at a future business meeting. Thank you very much for coming forward and your wonderful presentation today.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Bye-bye. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you. Next is the second public hearing today. It is approval of a Board order transferring jurisdiction to the City of Oregon City for all of longstanding court, County Road Number 3043, Department of Transportation and Development Number 31046. Total value is $26,700. Funding is through the Community Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Dan Johnson, the Director of Transportation and Development, and Rick Maxwell, engineering technician, will present. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Gary. Chair Smith, Commissioners, these road transfers are not new to you. As you can tell by the title of this particular road, it is a court. It is not as significant. Rick's going to get into some details about that. But essentially, we are actively looking to transfer responsibility for these railways to reduce our long-term liability on maintenance when we have cities that are willing partners to accept those roads. And we have that set of circumstances for this particular road now. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Rick to kind of run through the specifics.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Rick Maxwell. I represent the county's Department of Transportation and Development. Today, we have before you a request from the City of Oregon City to approve a Board order for the transfer of jurisdiction of longstanding court from Clackamas County to the City of Oregon City. This request has been discussed by staff of both jurisdictions, and both jurisdictions have approved an intergovernmental agreement pertaining to this transfer. Clackamas County and the City of Oregon City have agreed to the transfer of longstanding court to the city with the intent of streamlining roadway improvements, eliminating confusion to the public, and to improve the efficiencies of maintenance and public service. Longstanding Court is located entirely within the Oregon City city limits. Clackamas County has agreed to provide to the City of Oregon City funds in the amount of $26,700, which is equal to the cost of a two-inch overlay over the entire roadway. Longstanding Court is a dead-end cul-de-sac of approximately 475 feet in length and contains approximately 28,480 square feet of right-of-way. A notice for today's action was published for four consecutive weeks in the Clackamas Review. This request is consistent with the county's practice and policy of partnering with local jurisdictions to provide the necessary government services at the least cost for our citizens. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to reply.
I'm not sure if you noticed that Rick's been watching closely. He was very close to the mic, so he was clear. What's fabulous.
Yes, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Do Commissioners have any qualifying questions?
No.
I will now open the meeting for public testimony.
I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify on this matter only? Tony is checking for cards in the basket. Seeing none. We'll have Tony check anyone on Zoom who would like to provide public testimony.
If you would like to testify on the transfer of a longstanding court, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Board order transferring jurisdiction of the City of -- to the City of Oregon City for all of longstanding court, County Road Number 3043, DDT Number 31046. Seconded by somebody.
I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schult has moved we approve the Board order transferring jurisdiction to the City of Oregon City for all of longstanding court, County Road Number 3043, DTD Number 31046. And Commissioner West has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Would the clerk please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schult.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Gary Schmidt, what is up next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Item 1, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item Number 2, Approval of an Annual Operating Plan of the U.S. Forest Service for Law Enforcement Services by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office in the Mount Hood National Forest. Value is $64,973.08 for one year. Funding through the U.S. Forest Service. No county general funds. This is for the sheriff's office. Item 3, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Send It Direct Mail and Fulfillment Incorporated for ballot packet preparation and mail services. Contract value $420,000 over 3.25 years. Funding is through recording fees and allocated costs, which includes a small portion of budgeted county general funds for the county clerk. Human Resources, Item 1, Approval of a Board Order for Implementation of the Final Offer for AFSMI West for Represented Employees. Total value $96,289. Funding through Water Environment Services. Ratepayer fees, no county general funds are involved. Technology Services, Item 1, Approval of a Board Order to Issue a Purchase Order for VMware Cloud Disaster Recovery Licensing Services and Support. Purchase order value is $788,417.91 over three years. Funding through county allocated ARPA costs were allowed and departmental cost allocations, which may include a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Health Housing Human Services, Item 1, Approval of Amendment Number 1 to an Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for Veteran Directed Care Programs. Amendment values $53,763.85 for 27 months. Agreement value is increased to $371,262.09 for four years and three months. Funding through the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of an Emergency Response Grant Funding from the Oregon Department of Human Services for the purchase of emergency preparation kits for individuals with disabilities. Agreement value $695,879.14 for 10 months. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of a Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated for the Naloxone Distribution Project. Agreement value $741,000 for 21 months. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval of Revenue Lease Agreement with Genoa Healthcare LLC for space at the Lake Road Health Center. Agreement value is up to $46,290.84 for three years and three months. Funding through Genoa Healthcare LLC. No county general funds are involved. Item 5, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Assist for a Social Security Disability Insurance Recovery Services. Contract value $450,000 for 16 months. Funding through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 6, Approval of a Local Subrecipient Grant Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants with Transcending Hope for the Acquisition of Property and Startup. Costs for Behavioral Housing. Agreement value is $950,000. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony.
Madam Chair, there is one more. I apologize.
Sorry.
Transportation and Development. I have one item. Approval of the 2024 Planning and Development Grant Intergovernmental Agreement with Metro, Accepting a Grant Award for the Zoning and Development Ordinance Diagnostic Report. Total award value is $263,000. Funding through Metro 2040 Planning and Development Grant Program. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Again, Tony, thank you.
Take a sip of water.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item from this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Commissioner West has approved. We -- has moved we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please take the poll?
Commissioner Schult.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
This is the Consent Agenda for the Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Two items. Item 1, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas River Water for the relocation of Clackamas River Water Distribution Manes. Total value is up to $43,098. Funding through Water Environment Services. Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Board Order for Implementation of the Final Offer for AFSMI West for Represented Employees. Total value $96,289. Funding through Water Environment Services. Ratepayer fees, no county general funds are involved.
Thank you very much. Is there any Director wish to remove any item off this consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second. Director Savis has moved we approve the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Director Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the poll?
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schult.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Aye, motion passes, 5-0, thank you. I will now adjourn as Water Environment Services and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes, comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, I will take in-person testimony first. Do anyone in the room like to testify? I see no one in the room who would like to testify. Tony, is there anyone online?
Madam Chair, we'll begin with Wendy Summerfield. Ms. Summerfield, please state your name and area of residence, you will have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Wendy Summerfield, and I reside at the forum at Town Center at 8709 Southeast Causey Avenue, Senior Living Community.
Go ahead, please, ma'am.
We have a concern of the homeless RVs on our street, the garbage, the unsightlyness, and just wondering if this is the place to give our concern.
Wendy, it is the place to give your concern. We received a grant from Metro, and we've just went through it in nothing flat to remove unoccupied RVs, however, if they are occupied RVs, a different law monitors the ability for us to remove them or not. I'm going to have legal counsel opine on this. Commissioner West?
Thank you for calling in today, and I don't want to take all your time, you do have three minutes to share your thoughts with us, but I want to make sure, at least that I'm taking notes on the concern that you have. Where are you specifically seeing this, these RVs kind of congregate? And then I just want to make sure we're being as responsive as we can, if you could provide additional details, we'll make sure to note those.
Right in front of our community at the 8709 Southeast Causey Avenue address.
Okay, we're noting that. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just want to let Wendy know that we are aware of that, I've been pointing that out to our staff. Sometimes it is an eyesore. I was just recently on Causey Avenue about two months ago with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office on a ride-along. So I share your concerns. As the administrator had stated, it is a challenge, I believe it was the administrator, it is a challenge if someone occupies the motorhome. But we are actively trying to remove illegal vehicles from the roadway, but again, if they're occupied, it makes it difficult, if they're not registered, it's easier, if they are registered, it makes it harder. So it's something we're constantly working on, but we do have funds to take abandoned RVs and remove them from the roadway, as the chair stated, so we're working on it, and we'll, again, raise this to the attention of the sheriff's office.
Yes, we do call them quite often, of all kinds of different activity, there's an RV there that has no motor in it, there's the pop-up tent trailers that are just completely unsightly, and we are losing business over this. And we have been a business here going on 39 years, I have worked here for 32 of those 39 years. In this last year and a half, two years has just been awful.
Wendy, what is your business?
Senior Living.
Oh, senior living, excuse me. Okay, I thought you were living in the senior living, but you own that.
No, I'm a mannequin.
Thank you very much for that point of clarification. Thank you for bringing this, bringing this forward. Would staff like to make any comments on this?
We will do what we can to extract this as soon as possible.
Did you hear that, Wendy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Tony, is there anyone else online?
There is, I will continue with Sylvie Zotoff. Ms. Zotoff, please state your name and area of residence, you will have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Sylvie Zotoff, and I work with Wendy Summerfield, I was also, you know, joining regarding the issue that she brought up. Another question adding to Ms. Wendy's question was the fact that there are also some vehicles, like cars, that have been also not operating, that are just not occupied, also in that street, and I would like to know what is the regulation of having tables and additional things on the walk path? This is the walk path that our resident used to go around the community, and it is unsafe when there is tables, chairs, and different things on the sidewalk.
Good question. Stephen McCorr, do we have, do we know if a sidewalk is blocked, if that activity is legal or not?
You're not supposed to be blocking sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah, those are all publicly accessible ways, and there was a case in Portland where they brought an ADA claim against the city of Portland for allowing homeless tents and pallets and things like that, obstructing public passage on sidewalks, so they should be cleared and people should be allowed to right of passage through there.
Thank you, Sylvie, we'll contact the sheriff's office and have that sidewalk cleared.
Appreciate, thank you so much.
Thank you for calling. Tony, is there anyone else online?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Well, thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting and move on. Gary, we're up for the county administrator update.
Yes, thank you, and I have some great news to share about the amazing work of our county employees, and thank you for allowing me to do that. So as you know, we have a great following on social media of the public accessing Clackamas County through social media, we have tens of thousands of followers on our Facebook, formerly Twitter, now known as X, YouTube, and a recent post got a lot of positive comments I'd like to share. So we posted on social media about the county's ongoing success to stem homelessness, thanks to your leadership board, and in particular, this was sharing the quarterly report of the county's efforts on the supportive housing services fund, spending those funds, and some public comments based on the sharing of that report. Wonderful, I'm so happy that the county accommodates babies too, so that families can be kept together. Next, so happy to see positive outcomes for Clackamas County, housing serves the community overall and is a very valuable social service, housing solves many other issues for those who are provided affordable housing. Next, this is so wonderful, I used to work at the warming shelter in my old town before I moved, I'd love to say, I'd love to find a way that I can help support this important mission. Next, I am so grateful for the opportunity our family was given by these programs, our autistic son is flourishing, and our daughter is making friends and coming out of her depression. I am able to recover and learn to cope with chronic defects and still be useful to my community, and slowly wean off assistance as my children become more capable, and my husband is recovering from his multiple surgeries and COVID, and is excited to finish his degree in engineering. Each step towards self-sustainability is invigorating, and we are so grateful to Clackamas County. Just a few of the words that are, your members of the public posted about the work we're doing on social supportive housing services. So thank you to our staff of Health Housing Human Services, and those particularly working on the supportive housing services program, who help make a difference to our residents every day. That is my update for today, commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, those comments are very well received. Very nice. Up next is Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader, I believe you're up first.
Well, I did want to talk about where I was this morning, I know that Commissioner West was there, but we went to visit the Children's Center of Clackamas County, a place where healing begins, and I was on the ground floor of that way back in the day, before we had a children's center, and we had built a coalition with Providence Hospital, we've built a coalition with our DA's office, at the time it was John Foote, who was our DA, and what was happening is that children who were abused or neglected were literally being sent into Portland to multiple areas and agencies to get assessments done, and we realized at the time that that model, and this was way back in about 2004 or '05, I believe, that that model was not workable, that really we needed to have a centralized space to have all of these assessments done. So we all got together, we fundraised, and we opened up the first children's center up on the hill next to Providence Hospital. It was a small building, it wasn't very, as sophisticated as the building we had now. Susan Reynolds, who was a friend of mine, was one of the first directors of that center, and from there it's grown very strong, it's grown to really one of our premier nonprofits in the county, that really works with children that have been abused, neglected, and it's a one-stop where children can get assessed, the family can, families can get counseling, it provides a safe place for this to happen, so we can make sure that the trauma that the families and these children have experienced are taken care of appropriately in one place. We've been fundraising through the years, I've been involved in every single fundraiser, I believe they have one ongoing now for a virtual fundraiser for travel, and I may have to take a look at that, I think, to see what we're going to do. And it is, as I said, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and my question is, Gary, I had a question for you, are we going to be putting out pinwheels out on our front lawn this go-round? A lot of times, we did that every year, just to do that, and I don't know if we're doing that this go-round.
Usually that's a request that comes from H3S.
Okay.
So they will contact us, I think, when the time is right.
That's kind of what I was hoping, because I remember, it really reminds us of what we need to be doing here, and it's a great, it's a great visual to remind people, we put it out in our center area of planting pinwheels to remind us that this is something that we do in the county, and that this is something that is important for our constituents. I don't have much else today, except I do want to say something, there was an email last week with photos of my colleagues on it, and I was not happy with that, I felt that it was unfair. I think that it was, had to do with some of the negotiations that we've been doing with the North Clackamas School District, and I just want to remind everybody that if it becomes hyper-politicized, and I believe that my colleagues are being unfairly treated, I have to say something about it, and I really wish people would realize that we are negotiating in good faith with the district, and we're negotiating in good faith with the folks that provide the services there, so we can come to some agreement about how we can maintain them. But when we get these kinds of negative things thrown out, where I believe that my colleagues who I'm elected to serve with are unfairly treated with that, you have to give us the space and the time in order to move forward with this. Most of these conversations have to be done in executive session, that's where they belong, there is no lack of transparency, and I just want to mention that, because I think in this hyperpolarized political environment, we really don't need to be doing that to each other. So I did want to make a comment, because I was surprised to see that, and I don't think that's the way that we should be treating one another, and it certainly doesn't help me, you know, trying to work with my colleagues to, you know, solve, solve this particular issue. So please give us the space, please give us the time to move ahead with these negotiations. I am confident that we will come to a fair and just, a fair and just agreement for everyone involved, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Up next is Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, well, I didn't plan on responding to that, but I will a little bit, and that is that, make it very clear that this email makes false accusations, there's a saying, if it's too good to be true, it's probably not, and in this case, if it's too bad to be true, it's not either, right? And that is really a gross misrepresentation of the facts, and it's unfortunate, and it's obviously politically motivated for reasons that one can read from the email. I want to talk about a little bit, I'm going to start off with the easy thing, and that is that NCPRD District Advisory Committee met last evening, a little bit of discussion about a ongoing challenger issue with people speeding down the trolley trail on bicycles, and it's been going on for a long time, actually, and now with the advent of e-bikes, it's even amplified, because the e-bikes have a higher speed, or capable of much higher speed, so it's really taken, you know, a turn for the worse, if you will. So the NCPRD and our county road department, Public Safety Committee are discussing it, but I just want to make you aware that that's an issue that's going on, so you're not surprised. Hopefully we can find some grant monies, maybe to put up some speed limit signs, or do something to let people know. But I did ask a question last year, what is, what is recommended speed limit for trails? I never did get an answer, but, long story short, in some of the material that our staff responded to, I was seeing in another state that the recommended speed on that particular trail was 10 miles an hour speed limit, seems pretty reasonable, but I just want to make you aware of that. And one thing, just a segue into the public comment, at the, the trolley trail's got a fascinating story, I'm not sure that our newest colleagues know the story, but I will say that at the end of the trolley trail on the, on the corner of Jennings Avenue, where on the south side, the southeast side of Jennings Avenue, where the trolley trail crosses, there is a motorhome that people are living in, and it was also mentioned recently on this topic, that some people are intimidated to even go near that as they walk. It's not blocking the trail, the sidewalk, but it's an eyesore, it's been there for months, so don't know if there's anything we can do there, but I know they're expanding outside the RV onto the, what would be the right-of-way. So that's the softball aspect of it. I want to just talk a little bit about safety and why safety is such a big deal for me. When I first came here, I'm going to try to do this in order of cadence, when I first came here, relocated my business from Lane County to Clackamas County, I was working day and night at my, setting up my business before I opened the doors, and it seemed that once, twice a week, there was someone getting ran over on McLaughlin Boulevard, crossing the street, not at the crosswalk, but mid-block crossings, and it was, after, after that summer was over, I think there were five or six people that were hit, and a majority of those lost their lives, being hit by a car. And yet today, in that area, there's nothing really to blame, but, you know, why people, when there's a crosswalk available, and deliberately, there was always a crosswalk available within a matter of, you know, 100 feet from where these people were crossing, because they didn't want to walk the extra distance, I guess, to the crosswalk and do it safely. It blows my mind, as we spend more and more transportation money sometimes, and it's sad to see that we go out of our way to spend money to make our streets safer, but yet people don't use those facilities. In recognition of that, ODOT did try, and they put basically some mid-block crossing pedestrian islands in there, and that has alleviated some of that to some degree, so it's been an assistance. But shortly after that, what TRIMET did was they put bus stops, mid-block crossing bus stops, and, you know, it goes to the reason that if the bus, if you're on one side of the road, but the bus you want is going the other direction you want to cross, and guess where you're going to cross? Where there's no crosswalks. So where the crosswalks are, or the pedestrian islands are, are not where, often, where the TRIMET crossings are, and there have been people that have been ran over, killed, some horrible stories, because my business is on McLaughlin, I could just tell you, I could be here for all too long telling you too many very sad stories. So here, about five or six years ago, in my role on the Region One Act, I served as a Connect Oregon Representative for the State, we were lobbying for money, and one of the areas in which we lobbied for money for another crosswalk in an area of need was between Park Avenue and Washington Street, basically an area where the trestle goes over, and also the light rail trestle goes over the street, and up in that area, there's, it's really the mix of the city of Milwaukee and the unincorporated area of Oak Grove, and so we put a, spent a lot of money creating a trail that not only goes from downtown Milwaukee, but goes over to McLaughlin, nice little trail, nice little natural area, and a nice crosswalk, and people use that, so it's nice to know that people use it. But unfortunately, this week, I believe on Monday, an 80-year-old gentleman decided to cross the boulevard, and probably the most dangerous part of it, where it's narrow, it's kind of blind, and motorists can't see, and he was hit and killed Monday evening. Very, very sad. And again, the crosswalks at Washington Street, where you can cross, and there's crosswalks at this new, well, new five or six-year crosswalk, sitting there at about where the Oak Grove River Road area is, and again, used and a nice trail, but that's unfortunate. And, you know, today, as a reminder today, it's 4/11, 23 years ago, my mom and my brother were killed in a car accident, and I want to talk about, really, this is more about I-205, they weren't killed in Oregon, it was not Oregon, had nothing to do with this, but what was similar to that is that the part of the area, the part of the county in which this accident happened, was due to some speed, due to speeding, in an area that was transitioning from a rural area into an urbanized area, so the roads were not up to standard, where they weren't up to improvement, and as you know, Stafford Road, I think of it all the time, it's a reminder all the time, people use that as a racetrack sometimes, they speed through there, as they're diverting, because of the bottleneck on I-205, often, it's a diversion, so they're trying to kill time, because they've been stuck in traffic for so long, or they're late, whatever that motivation is. So I've been focusing on that for a long time, the county has obviously taken a position of trying to get this bottleneck, not neck fixed, and the safety is, I think, the big huge issue there, but it is something that we don't really have the funding as our communities grow to improve these roads, put shoulders on the road that, you know, I'm not saying sidewalks and bike pad in rural roads, but when we transition, there's really no money for that, because we can't collect any money in the unincorporated areas when the cities themselves grow, adjacent, Wilstonville, for example, and Westland as they grow. So these, these areas in between the cities become areas where the roads are not improved, they're not up, they don't have many safety standards, there's no place to really walk, people get hit, people get killed, and it's very sad, but I just thought that as all these things connect on today being the 23rd anniversary of the accident, and of course, this week, this gentleman crossing the road on Monday.
Wow.
Just a lot of intersections of safety, where it's on my mind quite a bit. So I, my condolences to the family of the gentleman who was struck and killed, and I don't know how we, how we ever fix that. I don't know how many of you see it, but what I see often, I see a sidewalk in front of me, I'm in traffic, and someone bolts across the street, and the sidewalk is literally 100 feet away, or 100 yards away, but there's a safer way of doing it.
Yeah.
And I just, we can never overcome that, and yet we continue, and we need to, I think, make things safer, but I always wonder about how much that's going to be utilized. We can't get this perfect, but we can do the best we can. So I just want to applaud all the people that sit on our safety committee, those that are cared about the safety of others, and we'll do the best we can. That's what I have for today.
Thank you for sharing that, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner West, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. It's been, I know for all of us here, it's been a busy week, and it looks like next week is also going to be pretty busy. week is also going to be pretty busy. Important stuff is happening. I have a couple of things I want to address. Earlier this week in our last meeting, Clerk McMullen was here before us, asked her a couple of questions. Kind of want to just include you guys in with the dialogue that's been happening, just so we're aware of it. I don't know where it will go, but one of the largest increasing types of fraud that's very difficult to prevent is deed fraud. And we just all, many of us probably read the Willamette Weekly article where there was a gentleman in North Portland in his 80s, he owned a home free and clear, was going to leave it to his children, and he was a victim of that type of fraud. They were able to even scam the notary, the signatures, before he knew it, the locks were changed, and legally, the home was no longer his by changing the deed that was owned free and clear. This is happening across the country, it's happened in Willamette County. We heard testimony, it hasn't happened yet here in Clackamas. I did get a quick response from the clerk, which I do appreciate, her clerk professional response back to me, which basically said, we're going to do some good scrutiny of documents and looking at them closely. My suggestions back to her, so you guys are aware of it, I don't know if this would ever come to like a, I think it's maybe something we should be on our, that we should work with her office on, is we have a pretty robust database of signatures for our elections, vote by mail, but I think there's an opportunity to work with the Secretary of State's office at a local level to do some signature verification on deeds potentially. And if they don't match, then flag it as potentially something that needs to be looked at closer, a little bit more in depth than just looking at the document and seeing, you know, we've got to be a little bit more than just an inspection, in my opinion. So I wanted to ask Clerk McMullen if that's a possibility to start coordinating. I don't know if there's any legislative issue to get beyond with that, but legally. And then the other one is, many of us have probably utilized the PIN lock on our credit report. If there's a way to PIN lock access to a deed having a change done to it, it has to be PIN locked, and it has to use that PIN if it doesn't, you aren't paying it, they have to get a court order to release the deed and have those changes. Maybe some of those innovations we've seen, like with credit reports, or using our signature verification, would be a creative way to prevent this type of fraud in Clackamas County. We know it's in the area. We have a large population of people that may own their home free and clear, and they also may be seniors, which tend to be the population that's victimized here. And I think if we have, if we know this has happened, and we can get ahead of it in Clackamas County, we've seen it in our neighboring county that we share a 10-mile border with, I hope that we can be super proactive in preventing this tragedy from happening. Not everybody will be sophisticated enough to fight it, and it's quite expensive and difficult through legal representation, the way it currently is. So we got to do prevention piece with this fraud. So I hope that we can maybe work with the clerk's office on this. These are a couple of questions I posed to her, I'm waiting to hear answers back, I'm sure she'll be responsive, she has been. I don't doubt her concern for this issue either, that we all share. The other thing, I did get a chance to go to the Children's Center, that was my first time having real exposure to this really important, sobering nonprofit. It's sobering because they help kids that have been abused, neglected physically, sexually, in every horrible capacity that children should never have to endure. But they are there in a very trauma-informed way to help these kids out. One thing that I, the moment you walk in, it's warm, it's beautifully designed. I guess the architect who designed it donated all of his time, and he's quite talented, from the base moldings to the ceilings, it's quite beautifully done. And you can feel that when you walk in, and I think, and it's, every detail is very meticulous. The children are cared for in a very loving way. It's very transparent in the process that they do. And I think that, you know, they've seen, you know, it's, I'm glad they've seen growth, but I'm also sad they've seen growth, right? So their staff was around 21 individuals, working professionals, and now has increased to 35. We don't want to see them have more clients, but we all want to see them have the capacity to meet the need. So I'm excited to get to know the work they've done. I was heartening to hear that they had a lot of bipartisan support for their legislative actions recently, and they've got more stable funding to do the work they need. Clackamas County's center is arguably, is actually not that close, it is probably the most well-respected, proficient, and effective center of its kind in the state. There are other ones, but the model, once again, is in Clackamas County, dealing with this vulnerable population. I was so proud of that. Commissioner Schrader has been a feature, absolutely, in the work that needs to be done there, and your advocacy for children in general is admirable and noted there. And just for the record, she did get up for an early morning breakfast to be there with us. And so I don't know if you want to know that, Chair, but she is capable of being at an early morning breakfast. She did it.
Not too many.
And so that was really great. While I was there, because we just talked about this week, our moving forward with the Recovery Campus, which is a huge initiative that we're doing, and quite innovative and bold, got a talk, a chance to talk with other electeds that will, that we need to partner with us, right? Senator Merkley's office was there, Ron Wyden's office was there, Anessa Hartman's Chief of Staff, and she was there. There is a lot of synergy around the leadership we are taking in this, and a lot of people are excited because it's not, we haven't had this type of infrastructure built, and we've needed it for quite some time. And so it was a real honor to work with additional colleagues. And it wasn't an RRD issue, it was like, we need to address this human issue. And I really felt a lot of excitement around trying to help us get there, and knowing that we have to have a lot of different sources of funding. I am concerned with the state, with how siloed it is, and how hard it is to get a grant through the state. There isn't, I, maybe there's a way for us to advocate and work to help OHA and other grant organizations through the state be less siloed, so we could talk to one another and be more effective in getting the money where they, the money is where it needs to be. But there was a lot of synergy in those conversations that were happening, and they're excited about what we're doing. And then I'll close with this. Martha, thank you for your statesmanlike comments today. All too often in our work, we don't do that for one another, and we don't remember that we're all people here. And when, you know, misinformation that maligns the character of colleagues unfairly, I want to let you know that, and I think any one of us would come to your defense also. So we appreciate your kind words, and you've been an absolute pleasure to work with over the last year. So thank you so much. I just want to say that it means a lot to me that you publicly made those statements, and just thank you. And with that, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Shoal, you're up.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Clackamas County. And Commissioner Savas, thank you for those comments about safety. Much appreciated. On the Portland Water Bureau filtration plant, the people of COTREL, CPO, and the Pleasant Home Community Association are fighting a $2 billion filtration project. And they're standing alone right now, and they need the help of everyone who uses water from the Bull Run reservoir. Currently, they're fighting for themselves and their way of life out there, but they're also fighting to protect water bills from the Bull Run to Portland to Tualatin. That water, those bills for that water will go up four times easily if this project is built. Those two organizations are working to raise $20,000 by the end of May for their legal fight, and they're trying their best. Now, one of the things they're doing this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, at the Sandy Farmer's Market, on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., there'll be a plant sale, trees, shrubs, and plants. Some of the best plants you can buy coming from our nurseries in the east end of Clackamas County. So please get out to Sandy Saturday morning, Sunday morning, and buy all the plants you need for your springtime gardening. And also, please visit the COTREL CPO online and make a donation for their legal battle. On the Sunrise Corridor project, last night, Oksana and I attended the public outreach at the Happy Valley High School, and I was delighted to see so many people attending. It was well over 100 people, I'm not sure how many. But I would like to thank Jamie Stasny and Karen Burig and other staff for putting on a very, very good demonstration, information on the Sunrise Corridor Phase Two project. Also, thank you to Jacobs Engineering, some of the Metro staff were there, and staff from Happy Valley were there also. A couple of things I walked away with. One was the high number of people who told me that they want to see some picture, some concept of the Sunrise Corridor from 172nd out to Highway 26 as part of this Phase Two. They don't ask for a lot of detail, but they do need to have some kind of picture that will complete the project someday from 172nd out to Highway 26. The other thing that I heard a lot last night was people talking about the importance of the project being conducive to the movement of freight, because it's going to become our, it is our Clackamas County Northern East-West Highway. It's got to move freight, it's got to move people, it's got to move soccer moms, and do it all safely. Also, people talked to me about the need for a bike path along that area so they can ride their bikes safely. So thank you, everyone who made that possible last night, you did a great job. And I look forward to our next public outreach on the Sunrise Corridor project. On the cost of government, I'd like to share a few things with you today. Oregon is the second highest state in per capita spending in government. At about $16,000 per person, the only state that spends more money per capita is Alaska. But Alaska is rich with oil money, and it makes it a little bit easier for them to do that. So why is, if Oregon is spending more than 48 other states, you have to ask yourself, why do we have one of the shortest school years in Oregon? Why did the state have to close two prisons for lack of money? Why did DMV close half their offices last summer for quite a long time? And where did all those tax dollars go when you buy gas at the pump since Hector was a pup? Where are those roads and where are those bridges? So the question is now is, is Oregon spending too much money on services that are not core services? In other words, on services that we could do without? Question mark? The budget cycle for deciding what we're going to spend in this county in July 2024 through June 30th, 2025 will begin real soon. Now, I know there are people out there, in fact, the residents of Clackamas County currently have a credit card debt higher than ever before. And this is driven, I think, in the last few years by the inflation we've seen. I have people tell me all the time, they walk out of the store with a bag of groceries, the same items that they bought a few years ago that cost 50 bucks, for example, and they're saying it's now well over 100. So people and our families and small businesses in this county, they're getting stressed. So what do we do? Do we ask them to pay more in taxes, to fund more government programs and a higher cost of government? Or do we look at what we can do, things we can actually do, to reduce the cost of government? So in this next budget cycle, it's my intention to work with the people of Clackamas County, find out how they feel about what is a core service, and what is something that we do that they don't want to spend money on. So I ask people to contact me, and I recommend you also contact the other commissioners in the next few weeks. Let us know what we do for you in the way of services that you feel you can live without. And I personally will take those recommendations to heart when it comes to Budget Week. So please contact me as soon as you can, contact the other commissioners on your ideas on how to make government more affordable, and how we can put less pressure on the taxpayers in Clackamas County. Now with that, a quote for the day from a gentleman you all remember, "That government is the strongest of which every person feels himself apart. Politics ought to be the part-time profession of every citizen who would protect the rights and privileges of free people." George Washington. And today is my mission to protect the rights and the pocketbooks of hard-working people of this county and their small businesses. That's what I wake up for, and that's what I'll continue to work for. Thank you very much, and enjoy this beautiful spring day.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. This week, we had a legislative wrap-up of the short session, and Clackamas County did quite well, and $21 million of cash, actually, to finish our courthouse, $4 million to finish and construct the Sheriff's Stabilization Center. And that's used for when someone is arrested, they commit a crime, obviously, they are in crisis because of mental health or some other attributing factor, is addiction, they're able to go to this place and we're able to evaluate them while we stabilize them to figure out the next road for them to take. And it's very important on that. We also received a data report on our recovery centers, Commissioner West was talking about. We're very excited about moving ahead and constructing a recovery center. It may take a while, but the board voted unanimously to send out a notice of funding application to any agencies or nonprofits who would like to help construct this and meet our vision to move forward on treating addictions on a long-term basis in this county. Very exciting. Commissioners, I've been keeping you posted about Metro's Supported Housing Services Tax Roundtable meetings we've been having. And I've said before, they want to make this tax permanent, and the counties are pushing back, are also pushing back on the notion that somehow there is a half a billion dollars of unspent money sitting around. And I'm happy to report, our request was finally granted after the three chairs fighting back on to make a presentation next Wednesday to the entire body on exactly the services we're providing, how much it's costing, the allocations and appropriations that we have met, and the fact that we are reducing homelessness. As you remember, they have made an assumption that as the money goes up this way on a graph over 10 years, so is the homelessness. And I challenged them on that data report. So now is where the rubber meets the road, where the three counties, next Wednesday, will present a report with our staff, people, to let the ordinary people in the room know. Because this roundtable coalition is made up of people throughout the community, business people, realtors, builders, community advocates, and special interest groups such as nonprofits who are providing services. So I look forward to that, and it should be very good discussion. See no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.